Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting, today is April ninth, twenty twenty four.
Time is seven P M. Could we have roll call, please? Jamie?
Yes, Mr. Hack, here.
Here.
Mr. Van Wachinova.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we begin, anybody that would like to address the board this evening, we have our forms there in the back on that table right there by the door, and if you could give those to our Board Secretary, Jamie, that would be good. All right, that brings us to the revision and approval of agenda items, P O one six six. So do we have any deletions or additions to our agenda this evening?
We do. So underneath consent agenda letter C, this is for Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference. It should read three, not one. So underneath consent agenda, C should read three student, three Monroe High School students, not one.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move the, the agenda be approved as revised, I guess, with the correction for the three. Oh, sorry, B three.
Is there?
I can see. I'll get it right.
Is there support? Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachinova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to Superintendent Comments. Superintendent Shaw.
Wonderful, thank you. I have only one right here. So tonight, we have one student with us, and that is Ms. Emma Merschak. And Emma, for my two board members that were at the, at our Sedexo Future Chefs program, that have been Tom and Larry, you'll see that she was our winner. So if we could have Emma come forward, so I can give her her certificate. Monroe Public Schools Board of Education's certificate of recognition presented to Emma Merschak for demonstrating outstanding achievement, creativity, and passion for culinary pursuits as a twenty twenty four Monroe Public Schools district winner for Sedexo Future Chefs National Challenge. So congratulations.
Do you want to show us your mouth?
Yep.
Congratulations. So Amber, I know from, that's your mail. You want to come, stand right here next to Amber. I know Amber wants to talk a little bit about that. No picture, go ahead and share, yep.
So I just want to brag a little about Emma and what a great job she did at our Future Chef competition. So this competition was started in two thousand and eight. Every year, there's over twenty-six hundred students that participate throughout thirty states. So we have a really big emphasis on using fresh fruits and vegetables, and this is where she shined. So she made pancakes, but not just regular pancakes. What did you do, Emma, to make your pancakes special?
I made them shaped like cats.
Yep. So she used fresh fruits to make her pancakes look like a cat's face. So she used strawberries for the ears, blueberries for the eyes and nose, and what'd you do for whiskers? That was my favorite part.
I used apples for it.
Yep, she cut apples into little tiny slivers for her whiskers. So I just wanted to congratulate Emma. I have a feeling that she may be able to get us the first national championship to Monroe. So we did submit her recipe, so we are excited for that.
Great.
You have any questions? Anything you want to say? All right. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you very much, Amber. So to any other board member, so Tom and Larry and I have been able to do this now last two years. This year, the pancakes were wonderful. There was some really good food. We had some tacos made. The pumpkin roll, I think that was one that is kind of just.
Yeah, that made your ice place over, absolutely.
Let's just say the pumpkin roll didn't survive the night.
And I just want to make you know the pumpkin roll was made by a first grader.
Really?
It was really impressive.
And so for those that don't know, the challenges with, there's a representative from each elementary. And go to Custer and do this work and with all the staff from Sedexo. So it's just a wonderful evening. And so next year, if there's anyone who wants to get on there and be a judge, feel free to hop in because it's a wonderful time. So thank you. The two of you can go now, because I know, as you said, it's approaching your bedtime. Twenty-five minutes, Ms. Emma. So thank you. Not your bedtime.
All right.
So that's all I have for first comments.
Okay, that brings us to public commentary, board agenda items only. Do we have any?
No, we don't.
That brings us to board discussionary action items reports, and we have our contracted services and resignation reports. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. That brings us down to our consent agenda item. Are there any items that a board member would like to have moved off the consent agenda item and move to new business? Okay, hearing none. Can we get a motion?
I would then move that agenda items be to A through B to D. Be considered consent agenda and the consent agenda items be approved as recommended.
Is there support? Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachinova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Do we have any of our new hires here tonight?
I believe we do.
All right.
I believe we have one. I believe we have our new athletic director, newly appointed, Dr. Chet Hessen. And we have a provision that you would, we would like for you to stand up, come up and come to the microphone, and then you're going to introduce the people that you've brought with you tonight and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do so.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Dr. Chet Hessen. I see him pronouns. Currently, I'm the Senior Associate Athletic Director for Student Athletic Experience and Deputy U T L nine Coordinator at Bowling Green State University. I grew up, born and raised in Monroe, Michigan, went to school all the way through. Had the good fortune of being able to be around some amazing people, those that are here in the audience with me. Starting at a young age, Mike and Wendy Ganyer, friends of mine over the years and great role models and a family. Coach Barnes, Roosevelt Barnes here, one of my mentors, and we still stay closely connected. As somebody who played basketball at Bowling Green State University, I see him fairly regularly as well. John Ray in the back, current Director of Athletics and supporter for a long time. My wife, Misha Lambier, back here as well. My mom, Sue Hessen, and then Steve Polizzi, Principal, and good friend over the years as well. So that's my crew.
Great.
Yeah. What else can I share with you all tonight?
Well, you can come shake our hand.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Yeah.
We don't have to say don't trip.
You're right. Well, let's say it anyway, just.
Watch, now the truth.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, just watch your.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so, don't go too far, sir. We are, it is really exciting. John Ray, you want to step up here too, please? No, we, if I get a chance, we get a chance to have John Ray in the room. It's usually not this quiet, so we want to make sure we address the quietness in the room. John Ray, your wife is here tonight, correct?
No.
Sorry, I walked in.
Me too.
So I'm sorry, but where I wanted, John, I wanted you to help correct our new athletic director. Who's he supposed to start out with when he's introducing people and thanking them for being alongside of him tonight? His mom. Who was the first one he showed his dad? His wife and future John. So John, no, all kidding aside, I wanted to just take this moment and thank you for, you know, the last almost two years that I've been here with you and all that you've done for Monroe Public Schools and the athletic world. I know that you did a session with, with Chet a few years ago as he was moving through and had to have a mentorship time. And so I appreciate the work you've done with him there. But I truly appreciate, when I think about Monroe Public Schools and someone that really is Monroe Public Schools, you're one of the two people I think of and just everything you've done for us in the athletic world. And I'm truly appreciative of that work right there. Chet, as we talked before, big shoes to fill, okay? Someone's been in this job for twenty years, I know. But we, we believe in you and know that you're going to do a great job for Monroe Public Schools also, and excited to get you started. Chet, we'll be starting with us here probably towards the end of this month, so we can use this as a transition time. In some areas, you can always maybe have a person start after the other person has retired or gone on to their next position. In the world of athletics, that's a tough task to do, and it's a scary one because parents will go crazy if anything happens in the world of competition. And so the goal of the athletic director is to make sure when a competition is happening, they're like, man, that just went smoothly. That's what they're trying to achieve every time that an event is happening. And so we don't have buses crossing each other. We don't have official, make sure that officials aren't there, stuff like that. So this transition time is vital as one of Monroe's finest is wrapping up his career at Monroe, Monroe Public, and Chet's taking over. So with that, I appreciate the two of you greatly, and thank you for coming tonight. And can't wait, Chet, to get you on board right here. John Ray, is there anything you'd like to share before we keep moving on?
Well, twenty-one years ago, this is exactly what I looked like. I am so excited to, you got time for a short story?
We do.
Yeah, we always have time for you. We were at Romulus playing basketball, and Mr.
Glass?
Handels dislocated his shoulder in the Romulus game. And who's car did you jump in? Anyhow, I left, I left Romulus and I drove to the hospital, called Dr. McThee on the way. He beat us to the hospital. And he's got Chet in the emergency, was he in the emergency room at the time?
Southern Indiana had a funeral, I wasn't either.
So there's Chet, he's up on the bed, and he, he's in pain. So McThee walks up to him and ties, takes the bed sheet off the bed, ties a sheet around his arm. And then he tied the sheet around himself and started walking away from him. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I'm holding him down. I still can't hear out of the theater. And at some point, he finally gave in and his arm just went back in the socket.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's one of my great.
Great.
Chat stories, and the guy, and the guy that was coaching Romulus High School at the time was, you want to tell who it is?
Nate Oats, who was just in the Final Four, head coach of Alabama.
Oh, wow.
So that's Chet Hessen's story I'm going to sit down before they kick me out.
And Chet, I can definitely say that I remember when we hired Dr. Rakers, I was on the board then, and he did not look like.
Yeah. If I, if I could share a couple things, I do want to add, and this one's actually one of Coach Barnes. You know, I think one of my goals is to surround our youth with great people. And Coach Barnes is one of those people that, as a coach, you know, you don't really realize until you zoom out a bit. So he got the head coaching job my sophomore year in high school. And part of that, we didn't have any summertime programming. We had no youth development programming. And he came in and led a big culture shift where all of a sudden, we started to do a lot in the summer. And Coach Barnes would call me, back then, it was the landline, not the cell phone, but he would call the landline on like a Friday night at like seven, eight o'clock and was curious as to what I was doing, wanted to see if I was going to be in the gym over the weekend and just check up on me. And at the time, you're, you know, sixteen years old, and you're like, man, I do not want to talk to my head basketball coach on a Friday night. He's, he's really salt my game here. But, you know, you zoom out a bit and you're like, man, this guy really, really cares, and he really wants to be plugged in, and he knows what's best for you. And so you have these different forks in the roads and opportunities that, you know, come your way. And he's been somebody that's always been connected, so whether it's three months that goes by or six months that goes by, we still stay connected twenty-plus years later. Those are the types of coaches that we need here at Monroe. Those folks that are going to build a program from the youth level on up, have physical education, have synergy with our competitive programs, have coaches that lead with their values. My values are pretty simple. I call them Chet values. So I choose courage over comfort and lead with curiosity. I prioritize health, safety, and well-being. I prioritize emotional intelligence and the environment that we create, and I prioritize teaching in a thoughtful way. And that is something that Coach Barnes and other great coaches, Steve Polizzi as well, is one that's in the back. I was actually, was that your first year coaching as well? And then when I was coaching JV football in middle school, I had a chance to work with Steve when he was the varsity football coach at that point in time. We have the right people in place in leadership positions. I do truly feel that. And we're going to continue to build it from youth programming on up. So I'm excited to get started. I have a lot of energy and zest and zeal for this, so thank you for allowing me to be a part of this program as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to new business, but before I turn it over to Mr. Shaw, I want to provide some background and context on our agenda items. All items on our agenda have either been discussed in depth at a prior work session and/or addressed in weekly board briefs. So although it may seem that we move through these pretty quickly, we want our public to know that we have thoroughly done our due diligence and reviewed prior to this meeting tonight. Also a reminder, all of our work sessions are open to the public. Mr. Shaw, I will turn it over to you for the second reading, I believe.
All right, so the first thing we have is Board of Education seats for November twenty-fourth. So it is that time of year where we make sure people are always aware. So our board is comprised of four-year terms, and so we have three people and one's four-year term, and we have four in another. So this coming November, four seats that will be, are up for election, doesn't mean that the people that are sitting on them won't be rerunning, but these are the four seats will be Larry Van Wachinova along with Mary Vincent, Carrie Williams, and then point over Scott would be sitting, that's our attorney sitting there tonight, but Scott is not with us. So those are our four seats. And so for the deadline for candidates for local school boards and community college trustees to file an affidavit of identify identity and nonpartisan nominating petition is Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four by four P M. A one hundred dollar non-refundable fee may be filed in lieu of petition withdrawal deadline elapses at four P M on the twenty-sixth. So we'll put that on our week in review and let others know as a reminder of that. But that's July twenty-third, for people that want to run for the Board of Ed, is the deadline.
All right, that brings us to the School Family Appreciation Week Resolution. Mr. Shaw?
So in your packet, you have that the week of April the twenty-ninth through May the third is designated, designated as Schools, School Family Appreciation Week, whereas the Monroe Public Schools system consists of approximately thirteen hundred regular certified and support employees, and whereas these employees are dedicated to providing the best for our students, including clean and safe facilities, an appropriate learning environment, and a quality educational program. Now, therefore be it resolved that Monroe Public Schools, Public Schools Board of Education appreciates the efforts of all the employees, and be it further resolved that Monroe Public Schools Board of Education proclaims the week of April twenty-ninth, May the third through May third, twenty-four, as a School Family Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the following days are designated as recognition. Monday, the twenty-ninth, administrators and exempt employees, twenty, I'm sorry, Tuesday, April thirtieth, teachers. Wednesday, May the first, custodian and maintenance and bus drivers. Thursday, May the second, assistants and kids club and preschool employees. And Friday, May the third, secretaries and all other support personnel. Be it further resolved that this resolution will be posted in all buildings to show support for all the excellent services provided to our employees.
Can I get a motion?
I move to approve the School Family Appreciation Week Resolution as presented.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I just have one point of discussion. When it, I know that we have the, can we get a calendar so that we know all of the days of appreciation and all those times that are set aside, because I, I just don't have them, so.
We will have those out.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachinova.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to School Security Service Contract. Superintendent Shaw?
So we did our School Security R F P and presented to you in our last board work session. And so it is our recommendation to, the board approve the Security Service, Service Contract between Monroe Public Schools and Robert Security Investigations, effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-nine. And that is a five-year contract.
Can I get a motion?
I would move that we approve the School Security Service Contract, per the recommendation of superintendent.
Is there support?
I'll support.
Any discussion?
I just had a question. Looking through the contract, I noticed they have a security guard at the high school, the middle school, in Arborwood. Just curious why they don't have one at Custer.
So at this point in time, when at Arborwood, that person was placed there last year. And so each year, we evaluate if we need to add or remove security guards. And so at this point in time, we haven't had a necessity to add one, anyone at Custer.
I have one question. Are these typical five-year contracts?
So on this one, because of the numbers that they presented, rather than making it a three-year, because their numbers were extremely supportive, we made it a five-year, was his recommendation.
What numbers?
When we presented their, how much their, what their hourly wage was.
Charges. Okay.
Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachinova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That brings us to Critical Mapping. Superintendent Shaw?
So Critical Incident Mapping is what the state has been requesting for all schools to do, and that is mapping of our buildings and the grounds around our buildings. And so we're recommending that the Board of Education hire the lockout company at a cost of forty-eight thousand dollars for this project, and that fund would be, that would be paid for through the ninety-seven D grants. This is a program too that, as a county, we're trying to all, as school systems, stay with the same vendor because of all the first responders and other personnel that everybody would be using, so consistency matters here. So that's why the lockout company is the recommendation.
Get a motion?
I move that we approve the Critical Mapping or Critical Incident Mapping per the recommendation superintendent.
Support?
Support.
Any discussion?
I would just like to make note on this, only because it came up during discussion. In the background, it says that it includes signage, and it was clearly stated that signage was not included in this proposal that we're doing. So I just want to make sure we're not presenting ourselves like we're buying signage, and we're not. So just make a note of that.
I would just like to point out the consistency with the colors and things of that sort. So if a first responder comes in, I mean, they know exactly where to go, so that's critical to our students' safety for sure. So I think that's real important.
Very important.
Yeah.
Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachinova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. Seeing as we don't have any old business tonight, I will turn it over to Superintendent Comments for the second round. Superintendent Shaw?
Thank you. Typically, I don't do all that talking. Usually, other people have it, and so it feels like tonight, all I've been doing is rambling. So just a few things. One is, yes, as we get into the month of April right here, you're going to see a calendar coming out into your hands for the rest of the year, which is a very depressing moment because it means we're putting another year in the books. And the moment you make that calendar public, the rest of the year goes by in a blink of an eye. And so I know that for the handful of seniors that are watching us tonight live, y'all could laugh, that's a joke, okay? They're not a single senior. Thank you. I know they're on the countdown, though, to make that happen. So speaking of seniors, W X Y Z, Channel Seven recognizes and rewards academic excellence through its annual brightest and best program. And we're happy to say that Christopher Stein is our brightest and best for W X Y Z. The S E C Scholar Athletes, every year, the Southeast Athletic Conference recognizes the top five graduates from each of the fourteen S C C member schools, and you have to have, and that's also using your GPA and your SAT. There's going to be a luncheon to celebrate them on the twenty-fourth up in Ann Arbor of April, and that is Chris Stein, Max Adams, Aiden Corrier, Ethan Merkel, and Nolan Livingston. And then the other one is the Academic All-Stars, and through our Education Association, every year, they pick a freshman, sophomore, and a junior as their Academic All-Stars. And before COVID, and, you know, COVID was that marker right there, it was a, it's still a beautiful event, but before COVID, it was an event that was held as a whole county down at La Roy's in Erie. And so you had all the county schools come together, they had their three students, superintendents, the, the union leadership, and they would get up and talk about their students. Unfortunately, it's not coming back together, but we still celebrate these three students. We take and go out to dinner with them and their families along with union leadership to celebrate them. Our four, our three students is Abigail Galerito, and that is the ninth grader, Lindsay Kleinow, tenth grader, and Gavin Flinders, our eleventh grader. And then the big event that happens every year, the end of April, is our Young Entrepreneurs Showcase out at the high school. That is going to be a massive event, that's on April twenty-seventh at ten o'clock. So please put that on your, well, it'll be in your calendar right there. So come out and join in. The talent of our kids in the Young Entrepreneur Showcase is amazing. I have a couple of their items in my office from last year, and it's just a wonderful tribute to the work that they do. And then the last item for our community members is this, on May the second, in culmination of all the work we've done this year with peer-to-peer treatment, along with our positive behavior intervention supports, we're doing a kindness walk from Arborwood Campus over to Navarre Field. On that kindness walk, you're going to be in groups of twenty-five, and we are students and families that want to take part in it. And through the walk, they're going to be having different points where there'll be challenges given to them. And that, and the idea is around empathy, it's around thinking about others, putting others first, and it's called a walk in someone else's shoes. And so it's putting into practice everything we've been working on this year. So it'd be, it's going to be a beautiful night. We're going to have no, no rain. It's going to be sunny and eighty. Just putting that out there right now so that can happen. And when we get to Navarre Field, we'll have a blow-up where we'll be able to shoot a video and have a few more discussions right there. But the idea that for our kids is always to think about how, what's happening in other people's lives. You know, as I look around at our board and everyone that's in our meeting tonight, we've all shown up here and had some kind of a day. For some of us, it may have been a day that was just remarkable. Chet, you've had a wonderful day, okay? But maybe at some point in time today, it got rough, and I don't know that. And so something's going on behind the scenes. And we think about all of our kids and each person, and we want to help our kids and families just to understand that idea that you always need to think about others and what might be going on in their world, because sometimes it's tough. And we watch how sometimes we treat each other and, and want us always not, is to always put others first. And we watch how sometimes we treat each other and want us always not, is to always put others first and not be, not be about me, but about we. So that is going to be a night right there. We'll have some food and then busing back to Arborwood. So you'll be seeing flyers coming out, and we're hoping for maybe 1,000 people to take part that night. And so please keep pushing that word out.
Is there a rain date?
The rain date, we're not going to put that in the universe, Larry, Saturday, that Saturday morning at 9:00. So that's all I have for my comments tonight, sir.
Okay, that brings us to public commentary. Any topic? Do we have anybody?
No, we don't.
Okay, well, that moves us to closed session. Can I get a motion for us to go into closed session?
So move to going to closed session?
Is there support? Any discussion? Hearing none? Could we have a roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes. This right here is where we ask the public to leave so we can go into closed session for the purpose of consulting with the written advice of counsel. All right. We are now back in open session at 8:45 p.m. Okay, that brings us to board member commentary. Is there any board members that have commentary tonight?
I just have a question. I've been behind the football stands a couple of times. Doesn't look like there's a lot of progress going on.
April 15th, you'll see the steel.
So we'll be ready for graduation?
We're already, we had the meeting today, we had one, a big one about, I think it was two weeks ago. Yep, all the concrete work is done. And so now they're at the point where they're going to have a meeting this Thursday to talk about the asphalt side of it and like have the plants open, and when they're going to do that. But all the steel gets delivered on Monday, and they're expecting that they're going to be there about a week, week and a half.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
What was the percentage of count on Monday?
Seventy-five point eight. We can count it.
Anyone else? Can we get a motion to adjourn this meeting? Show of hands? This meeting is adjourned.
Hey, go be safe, everybody.